I'd like to call to order the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education's regular meeting on August 16th, 2021, at 6:30 PM in the Performing Arts Center. The meeting of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board of Education is a meeting conducted in the public but is not a meeting of the public. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct regular business that acquires action by the Board. These items may include those discussed at a previous meeting or presented to the Board for discussion this evening. As a courtesy, please turn off or silence your cellphones and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is the reading of the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement Statement. Mount Pleasant Public Schools is honored to acknowledge the Inishunnabi people whose traditional land we are gathered on today. To recognize the Inishunnabi people and their ancestral land is our expression of gratitude and appreciation and a way of honoring the Indigenous people who have been living and working on this land since time immemorial and whose land on which the Sagana-Chippewa Indian Tribe have resided and who have continued to reside on for centuries. We feel it is important to understand the longstanding history of this land and to seek to understand our place within that history. Next is roll call.
So Courtney's not here this evening, so I will be acting as Secretary. Sheila Murphy.
Here.
Jessica Jergenkin.
Here.
Weylin Pangal.
Here.
Timodakirk, here.
Amy Bond.
Here.
And Dana Cawkins.
Here.
Okay, next is the approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add?
I'd like to add discussion on the mask, but I'd like it under new business. D, please.
Okay. Okay, next is the superintendent report.
Good evening, everyone. Give me just one second to get my presentation pulled up so that everyone can see that. It helps if we're at the beginning, though, so we'll try that again. Okay. This evening, as I typically do, just before school starts, I like to give you kind of an update and an overview of where we are right now, what events we have coming up in the next 10 days, and, you know, where we see ourselves kicking off the school year. So first, I will start with what I think is very exciting news, that the majority of our staff members return to work tomorrow. So this summer, it's a little bit of a misnomer because we did have so many summer programs going, many of them worked all summer long, but they will, for the most part, be returning to work tomorrow. Most of our teachers will work three days this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and their work will include staff meeting time, teacher work time in their buildings and in their classrooms, getting things ready for the students to return, and then professional development. This year, again, we're excited to have Star Commonwealth back with us. Star Commonwealth is a multi-year program that we've been engaging in that's sponsored by Project Aware. This year's presentation is called Healing Trauma and Restoring Resilience. And if you remember, we've gone through the other modules that included dealing with trauma in schools, becoming a trauma-informed school, and also self-care. So some very important pieces of that. We also will work on professional development, that is what I consider to be more compliance-related, so looking at things like FERPA, Title IX, bloodborne pathogens, all of our favorite training modules that we get to do every year. So that will happen this week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, and we will be prepping our buildings for open houses and the first day of school. For students and families this week, it's an exciting week as well. Most families should have received, all families actually, our correspondence last week from their schools. This was correspondence that was sent to them via mail. It included the school newsletter, information directly from their teachers. For our high school students, we sent an unofficial transcript so they could get an audit, an idea of where they stand credit-wise. So all that information was sent out last week. If we do have any families that didn't receive that information at this point, we want them to contact the buildings directly. They also sent information regarding our open house schedule. And then we do have a couple special events that I'll talk about that are focused specifically on students that are doing grade-level transition, certain transitions, I should say. First, for our elementary open houses, we try to block them so that the same grade levels have the open houses on the same night in hopes that we're not causing too many conflicts with families. So Ganyard, Pullen, and Vowles Elementary, our DK to second-grade elementaries, have their open houses tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30. Fancher and McGuire Elementary have their open houses Wednesday night from 6:00 to 7:30. These open houses, of course, are for our traditional calendar students. If you remember, two weeks ago, we did have the open houses for our balanced calendar students because they've already been in school for a week and a half now. What families can expect at our open house? They can expect the opportunity to meet the teacher, see the classroom. Most of our buildings have some sort of treat or snack that they're providing, learning more about the buildings, important locations around the building, and then also connecting with different community agencies and community resources. We know that this is an important time for families, and so we want to make sure that we have as much information as possible for all these events. So these two graphics are just borrowed from the Vowles and Fancher Facebook pages, just as an example of what to expect at the open houses. For our secondary programs, as I mentioned, we do like to pull out and do special events for our students that we know are in an especially challenging transition. So for us, we always identify those students coming into sixth grade and those students coming into ninth grade as students and families that need a little bit of additional time and support. So because of that, we have tomorrow night a special open house for sixth-grade students and families, just for them, from 5:30 to 7:00 at Mount Pleasant Middle School. And then the regular open house for our seventh and eighth grade and returning students is on Wednesday evening at Mount Pleasant Middle School. Mount Pleasant High School is also a little bit different. They do an open house from 4:30 to 6:00 tomorrow evening, and then Thursday morning, they have a special orientation program for ninth-grade students or any students that are new to Mount Pleasant High School. So if your family's just moved here, your child's a junior, we want you to come to that orientation so that your student can learn more about the building. On Thursday, we also do school pitchers at Mount Pleasant High School, and that's a drop-in all day. That is actually the day where students will pick up their schedules and be ready to go for Monday. I wanted to talk briefly about food service information. Given that last year was a different year for food service, we want to make sure that all of our families are aware that we are still under free breakfast and free lunch for all students for this entire school year. It is still important for our district for families to complete the free and reduced lunch application that allows us to receive a variety of different forms of federal funding. So we want to make sure that as many families as possible complete that application. They can either do that online, or they can do that through paper copies that they can pick up in the school offices. We did also mail copies home, but that was in July, so I know that probably seems like a long time ago, so we'll make sure that they get them. Breakfast is served in the classroom in our elementary buildings and in our middle school, and if families or anyone have any questions, they can contact our central kitchen, and they should be able to let them know, you know, if they've received the form. I also want to make sure that you all know that we are actively putting our transportation plan in order and in working. Drivers will be calling families this week. They will be confirming that students are riding the routes, and they will be confirming pickup and drop-off times with students. That does tend to change slightly over the first couple of weeks of school, so drivers, really, this phone call is an introduction and to say this is what we think it's going to be, and then as routes are fine-tuned, it may shift a little bit, and they'll let them know. If we have families that have unanswered transportation questions, they can certainly contact the transportation department directly. There will also be a transportation representative at our open houses, so if there's questions, they could get them answered then. Two weeks ago, we talked about in-city busing, and we know that's a big priority, and that's a priority for us as well. We still do not have enough drivers to be able to reinstate that at this time, but it's something that we will continue to work with and look at throughout the year, so as soon as we can bring that back, we would let everyone know that. So again, another plug, if anyone out there is interested in driving bus, please contact Josh Rhodes or Linda Boyd so we can get you into our system quickly. We have some nice materials that are out and about regarding back-to-school, just reminding everyone that we are starting Monday, August 23rd. I know that feels early. For many people, it feels like this summer went by very quickly. And we also have all of our school hours listed. They shifted just slightly at the secondary level, so we want to make sure that everyone is aware of start and end times. In the building correspondence that was sent out, we did make sure that families also knew that we will still do pickup and drop-off outside. So where students were dropped off last year would be a similar spot this year, with the exception of the middle school, they have rerouted their parent drop-off slightly, and they send that correspondence out to families. So if you're a middle school parent and you drop off, you want to make sure that you know exactly how to drive through there on the first day. One of the things that I'm really excited about this year is getting our focus back on the work that we need to do. Back in 2019, we developed a very strong strategic plan that included a variety of goal areas that, given the pandemic, I think we've had to step away from, but I believe now it's time to come back and to embrace our strategic plan, our mission, our vision, our beliefs and values. And so you'll see me continue to reference that. That's included in our Touchstone magazine that went out to families this morning. I just really think that we need to get back to the heart of who we are and why we're here, so that's something that you'll see me continue to discuss this year, so. Does anyone have questions regarding the return to school?
Just one thing. I know that there's a lot of parents worried about, you know, in-city transportation. I was noticing that we were contracting, new contract with them. Maybe people would need to know that if they want to be trained, that I think I understood that we were paying to have them trained.
Yes.
And that type of thing, that might be a good thing out there to let people know.
Yeah.
If you don't have the training, we will pay for it, correct?
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, we walk them, we have the trainers in-house, we walk them through the training, and we pay for them to take the test, so.
So if you know of anybody who's interested, that would be a great thing for them to know.
Thank you, Sheila. That's a really good point. We do have lots of other positions available as well if anyone is looking for work. We have a different support staff, paraprofessional positions. I believe that GRBS and SFE are also still hiring as well, so. One other piece I'll just add, I know there are questions on everyone's mind regarding enrollment. I shared with the Board earlier today that at this point, it's sort of too soon to tell with students coming in and students going out. We don't always have the best information the week before school starts, so we sort of like to wait until we can actually see the students, and some people say butts in seats, whites of their eyes, but we need to see the students physically in our buildings to be able to count enrollment. So I should be able to give you a better update on where I think we stand around the middle of September, and then first count day is Wednesday, October 6th, so that's when the state starts officially counting our enrollment.
Any other questions?
I do, I do have some questions. Thank you, Jennifer, for the update. It's nice to see all the events that are happening this week in our buildings. I think for me, what's heavy in my mind is the fact that while I would hope that COVID was away, it's not, and I like that, you know, we can go back to thinking about things like our mission statement and really why we're all here. Could you walk us through kind of what are we doing to prevent COVID as much as we can? And so what measures we have in place right now in our buildings that is maybe the same as last year, or maybe what's different from last year, so that everybody can be...
Different than what I went through two weeks ago?
So...
Just to go through all of our COVID prevention?
Just, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have all the details prepared, but I mean, I did share, and there was correspondence sent to our families regarding our COVID protocols. We are very much following layered prevention, just like is being recommended by the Health Department and Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. So we're engaging in things like additional cleaning, teaching of good hygiene for our students, so hand washing, covering coughs, those kinds of things. We're distancing our students as much as possible in the classrooms. We're holding as many events as possible outside, so you'll notice that our open houses are a mixture of indoor and outdoor events, so that there is more flexibility there. We encourage teachers and staff to keep windows open, doors open, so while we can in Michigan, let's keep fresh air coming in to our buildings. We also, I believe Josh explained to you before, when he was here with our air handling system, where we have increased the amount of fresh air we bring into our buildings all the time, so even on those cooler mornings that we might have, we'll still have more fresh air here. We are, obviously, based on your vote here, we are requiring masks for students up to age 12. We are working closely with the Health Department for any positive cases, contact tracing, all those kinds of things. So I don't know if that answers your question, if there's something more specifically, but all of those pieces of layered mitigation are still very strong. Our staff, we went through all that with our administrative staff two weeks ago. Our administrators will be going through that with building staff tomorrow morning. We still have our COVID team in place, so they have a fun message for everyone tomorrow morning as well. So I feel like we're ready to hit the ground running, and I guess by not including that, I don't mean that that's not something that's not important, because it certainly is important, but I do think that we also need to remember why we're here and the important work that we have to do. Are there other questions that you have?
I guess for me, thank you for retereating. That's true, you did show that all two weeks ago, so that makes sense. If, let's see, so with that in place, do we know what the plan is, let's say, if we do have some COVID cases in a classroom? Because that's fairly different from last year in my understanding in, you know, in that we don't have our Oilers Online program. So let's say you have, we shut down, or the Health Department shuts down one classroom, what happens next?
So all of our teachers are now very well-versed in Google Classroom. All of our teachers still have that information ready to go. So depending on the situation, if it was a situation where a whole class needed to be quarantined by the Health Department, then we would work with that teacher to see how we could quickly bring those students along. If it's one student, we could either work with them through Google Classroom, through, you know, getting work sort of the old-fashioned way. I believe that we have many options. So when we have a positive case, our stance will not be any different than it has been. We'll still address that, and we'll still work very closely with the Health Department.
Thank you. I wasn't sure that was the case anymore.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Didn't know how that felt. That helps. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Thank you very much. Okay, next is the requested financial report.
Good evening. I have for you tonight the General Fund and Special Service Funds' revenue and expenditure comparison report for the month ending July 2020 and July 2021. For General Fund, revenues this year are currently at 1% of budget compared to 1% last year, and expenditures are at 7% of budget currently in July compared to 5% last year. Now, this is, again, one of those months that's a little skewed because some of those expenditures are really July and August salary and benefit that was accrued into 2021, and now it still needs to be reversed out of '21-'22 school year. So that's, the expenditure portions are a little overstated currently until they're reversed. For the Special Service Funds, athletics revenue is at 46% of budget compared to 0% last year, and expenditures are at 0% both years. That revenue is really an effort of the self-sustaining sports pon, the PonPon Group, is raising the revenue for the year, so that's what that is. The Children's Learning Center revenue is at 6% both years, and expenditures are at 7% this year compared to 4% last year, and again, they will have some of those expenditures reversed as well. The nurse testing program, the food service program, and the school store all do not have any activity yet for the '21-'22 school year. For the Treasurers Report, General Fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $6.1 million. We had receipts in the month of July of $3.2 million and dispersments of $4.4 million. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $4.8 million. For the Debt Retirement Fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $401,000. We had a tiny amount of interest income of $52 and dispersments of $290,000. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $111,000. And for the Capital Project Fund, on June 30th, we had a cash balance of $2.6 million. We had some interest income of $67 and dispersments in the month of July of $43,000. That brings us a balance on July 31st of $2.5 million. That's all I have for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I'd like to acknowledge that we received correspondence from the following people: Eric Chaircover, Mary Ann Zhang, Chris Brasner, Amy Ford, Penny Combs, Beth Garcia, Phil Hertzler, Amy Ford, Ryan Douglas, Kristen Pearson, Andrea McKinney, Kristin Newbecker, Wendy Schneider, Brianne Mogenberg, Chris Basner, Nicole Hagel, and Daria Cluver. Next, we move on to the consent items. I would like to see if there's a motion for the approval of the August 3rd, 2021 Regular Minutes, as well as the approval of bills to the sum of $1,268,172.72.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that passes. Next is new business. Linda with resignations.
Yes, we would like the Board to honor with regret the resignations of Chelsea Philhart, Abigail Lewandowski, and Andrew Schuborn.
And is there a motion for the resignation of Chelsea Philhart, Abigail Lewandowski, and Andrew Schuborn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And with regret, we hope that they move on to their next challenge or next thing that life takes them to. Next is the new hires.
Yes, please welcome Jenny Arlt for first grade at Pullen, Luke Apple Jr., Social Studies at Mount Pleasant High School, Leonard Klaakulak, culinary arts instructor at the GI Tech Center, and Michelle Maury, second grade at Pullen, and Cody Pfeifer, PE for the district.
Is there a motion to accept Jenny Arlt, Luke Apple, Leonard Klaakulak, Michelle Maury, and Cody Pfeifer?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And all are hired. Thank you very much for coming to our district. Next is the MBTA contract ratification.
Yeah, good evening. You have in your board packet the ratification tentative agreement with the Mount Pleasant Transportation Association. If you remember, that group does include our transportation and maintenance employees. Back in June, we did a 60-day extension, met with them several times over the last two months, and were able to come together with this contract extension. So we're still working through the logistics of combining these two groups. They were two separate groups, and they merged under MEA, let's say, maybe five or six years ago, so it's been fairly recent. So one of the first things you'll notice in that TA is that we're still working on reorganizing the master agreement. That's that section in green where we want it to flow better and make more sense. Quickly, we clarified who's cleaning the bay, who's paying for licenses when they're either obtained or renewed, some vacation and retirement pay. We did a little bit of work on the insurance coverage from the district, the cash-in-lou in place of insurance, and then really the rest of that is just cleaning up some language that's outdated. We did extend, agreed to extend the contract through June 30th of 2023. And then we put the standard wage opener in that we've done for the last several years. It really has worked well for our district, and that is that we agreed to meet with them regarding a wage opener on or before November 15th, and that gives us time to have our official audit in and Board approved, and then that way we actually know what kind of money we're dealing with. If you remember, we're in a bit of an awkward position where our fiscal year runs July 1 to June 30th. The state's fiscal year begins on October 1st, so we never really know what we're going to receive in-state aid. So, and then also, you know, we don't know enrollment and those kinds of things. So they agreed that we can meet with them back, come back together in November and look at wages at that point. So we're asking this evening that you ratify this agreement. Since it is a ratification, I do think it needs to be a roll-call vote. And I'll just say, you know, this is a really great group to work with. We really enjoy our time with them, and, you know, it's good when you can come together and laugh and agree on some tough topics, so we're thankful for them and for their team.
Is there a motion to ratify the agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Sheila Murphy.
Yes.
Jessica Jergenkin.
Yes.
Weylin Pangal.
Yes.
Dana Cawkins.
Yes.
Amy Bond.
Yes.
Timodakirk, yes.
Okay, and that passes.
Thank you.
Next is Sheila Murphy.
Yeah, so first thing I want to say is I am not opposed to masks. I am opposed to mask mandates. I have been doing a lot of study, a lot of research. I've gone down a lot of holes. I've learned more than I ever thought I would know about a lot of subjects. My big problem is that we're asking the group that is least affected by the virus and most affected by the mask to be masked, and I have a problem with that. These kids, less than 2% in Isabella County, they make up less than 2% of the cases, less than. No deaths, very few hospitalizations, and yet, and every research thing and study I've seen shows that they do not pass it on. So in other words, they're not vectors for transmission like the older kids are. They don't seem to carry the viral load. There's been studies across Europe and Israel, some in the States. There's no real issue of transmission in school in this age group. So we are now asking our teachers to basically be mask police because this age group is, needs to see faces for developmental reasons. We have studies showing that kids this age wearing masks, it affects their dental health. Kids who are on the autism spectrum, it affects their development. I've had people tell me, teachers tell me, that they take them out on the playground, they take their mask off, the kids still use their eyes rather than their mouths because they're so used to communicating by squinting or looking, that type of thing. That's not normal. And they're also the ones that are most, they're upset. I mean, we were scaring them. I know people say, oh, they're used to wearing it, that type of thing. Well, but it's not normal. You know, they're used to seeing faces, they're used to interacting. To teach them language, they need to see the mouth. So my thing is, if you think masks work, power to you. I'm not going to argue with you, okay? I've seen studies both ways. If you're not wearing an N95, I don't think the masks are going to be effective enough to stop transmission. Everything I'm saying that, you know, if it's not a tight mask, it's going to come out with the least resistance and you're going to get not just stuff inside their mask, but on the outside of their mask. Kids touch the mask, they touch their eyes, they touch, you know, they're going to get it, touching their mask as much as they're not. So I truly believe that if you believe the masks work, put a mask on your child, they're safe. But if you don't want to wear the mask, I think it should be the parent's decision not to wear it, not to have to send their kids. I don't think our teachers should have to be mask police. I know our administration has asked that maybe we could start with no mask and see how it goes. Obviously, if things change, we always have the ability to say, hey, all right, this is getting out of hand. But last year, that was the big thing, oh, it's going to be awful, and na, 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 na. And then yet, 2%, less than 2%, and that age group makes up all cases in Isabella County. And I think we have to do this not on a national level, but what's happening in our county. We're a rural county, fresh air for most of these kids, which vitamin D is huge. And everybody is saying, well, the CDC says. Well, that's not what the CDC said at the very beginning. And years of research from the CDC for the last 10, 15 years all said masking didn't work. And then all of a sudden, this comes on and masks do work. Well, that's just amazing. But that doesn't, I haven't seen a study that has said anything that it looks like it might work. I haven't seen a study that said it definitely works. So I just, I just think that we should give parents that option, take the onus off of the administration, take the onus off of the teachers, and if you want to mask your kids, mask your kids. I have absolutely no problem with that. But I think that we should give those who don't want to mask their kids in this age group that option.
You mentioned that, you know, you want this to be local control rather than national control. I'll point out that Dr. Morse at our local health department has recommended universal masking. That's about as local as it gets.
And they're taking their advice from the CDC. Well, I'm unfortunately, after many, you may laugh, but I'm going to tell you, I have been researching a lot of things, and a lot of things that the CDC has said and done regarding this virus has been contrary to what many other virologists, immunologists have said. And so they're not really high on my list of people I trust at this point.
Okay, so you're quite specifically saying that you did not find Jennifer Morse, the director of our local health department, to be unreliable.
No, I have no problem with Jennifer Morse. What I have a problem with is that she's passing down from CDC whom I do not trust.
Okay, then who are we supposed to be listening to?
Well, I think we should be listening to a lot of people and making our own decision, which is what I've been doing. There's a lot of virologists out there. There's Dr. Malone, there's Pierre Corey, there's numerous people who are all involved in virology and immunology and pandemic things that have all said that what the CDC is doing is wrong. And they have studies that show it. And there's things that they're not doing that they should be doing, which is looking at repurposing of drugs that may help prevent and/or stave off this pandemic from being any worse. And yet, they don't do that. The CDC gives us one option. You must immunize, and that is it. And that is not what I'm seeing from other people who have nothing to gain except actually the loss of revenue and the loss of their reputation because they disagree with what the CDC is saying. And I think that is wrong. And we are Americans, we question. And if I look and see, and I've seen studies and I see people who are as prudential, working on the front lines, doing the work and saying, we need to start doing this, why aren't we doing this? And yet, you tell me I'm supposed to trust these people and what they're telling me, and I don't. So I can't, by rights, I have to look and see what's best for our kids. Best for our kids is get, they're not vectors for this. The majority of them, you'll never know they even have it.
So I'm going to disagree with that. They are vectors. We have, and I know, you know, we could say, you did your research, I understand and I respect that. Unfortunately, this issue has been one where if you're looking for something specific, you will find it. There isn't enough misinformation out there. I think we all agree that we want the children back in school. We know that they learn best in our buildings, in our classroom. And for me, we are now, compared to last year, offering this. It is in our best interest to have these schools open as much as possible. And this is actually why I was asking you, Jennifer, what do we do if it does close? And it's great to hear that we've learned from last year, that we can put all the things that we've learned, that our teachers have learned, into practice to have as smooth a year as possible. There is one gesture that uniformly helps, and that's masking. It's a small, to me, a small cost in the grand scheme of things to ask a child to mask. Yes, it's not fun. Do I prefer that they wouldn't if it was a safer place? Of course. That being said, we know, I mean, and yes, the local health department does require, I mean, they actually strongly recommend universal masking, which we're not doing and it's driving me crazy. But at least we say for those that do not have access to a vaccine, to protect them with a mask is critical if we want to avoid any outbreaks. And while I would love for it to be parent choice, I think that it puts everybody at a much higher risk. The reason we have 2% last year is because our kids wear masks all year long in these classrooms. And we know it works. And so, you know, we have the data. Last year, we didn't know. But I was the first one to say, I wasn't sure how this was going to work, and I was, you know, actually want even more prevention, and it worked. Let's keep doing what we've been doing. And it actually makes me uncomfortable that we've actually reduced a little bit, that the 12 up, you know, and I'm thinking cafeteria, and I'm thinking lockers, and I'm thinking we're no longer cohorting the middle school. And so to me, all these things, the things that make me uncomfortable, I would not touch the under 12 until the vaccine comes. And when the vaccine comes and those that are at high risk can be protected, then to me, it's a different story because then it can be parent choice. And then at that point, I will be the first one to back away.
Okay, if the masks work?
They work, they work in every country.
If the masks work, and you have a high risk, and you put a mask on, then why does everybody have to be masked?
Because it's not effective. I mean, we've all seen the little comics, right, where you have one side without a mask and the other side without a mask, and the six feet and the rate, and there's a percentage. And then you see the same comic strip with a much lower percentage if one of the two is masked. And then it's even a much lower percentage if both sides, right, on the little comic strip, mask. I mean, the probabilities are there, the research is there, the data are there, it's, we have data from every country in the world. And while I'm sorry that you keep finding information that you don't find satisfying, I think we have mountains of evidence of how well these masks work. And so I don't, really don't think that's, for me at least, something that's controversial from the science perspective. I'm going to back away.
I understand that Sheila, that you're saying that 2%, only 2% are, of that age group are being affected. I sure would like to keep it that way. Isabella County is seeing a significant uptick in reported COVID cases and the Delta virus, so much so that Isabella County is designated significant with respect to the number of cases and the overall risk factor. Another, as much as, I'm, and I'm not saying that you're not, we are all about the kids. That's why we got into this volunteer position, because we want to look out for our kids. Another thing that I can't overlook is, what about the teachers? Who's keeping them safe? And I think if in fact, we, I think Jennifer and this board did a great job last year mitigating the risk factors. And I think the plan that was devised was outstanding. Not really sure why we're going back on that. I think we all want our kids to be face-to-face in the classroom. I think we all would agree that that is, that is best practice. I know also that there are clear masks. That's been one of the, that's been one of the issues that's come up. Kids, you know, facial expressions, I don't know how you would teach foreign language with your face completely covered. I can't imagine, that must be very difficult, but there are clear masks. That's an issue. I just, I can't with a good conscience put anyone at risk. I'm not saying that one source of information is better than the other. I have my bias about which is better. But for me, I just don't see how we can go against the experts. And I hear you saying, Sheila, that you don't trust CDC. I do.
No, I will just say, I have gone down.
May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. I think when we are looking, when we are looking at the big picture, I'm just, I just am not comfortable saying to our community, we are going to not only put the younger kids who don't have an option to be vaccinated. I understand what you're saying, and I completely agree that parents should have an option. However, they do not have an option to have their child vaccinated if they're 12 or below. That is not a choice. And young kids, I always say, they have drainage issues, you know? They're touching themselves, and if they don't have their masks, you know, you know, you have kids, you've had kids, you have grandkids, they're, they have issues, right? They're going to spread that. And I know that they will still spread viruses, they will still spread germs by having a mask on. But I don't think it's as significant as if they did not have a mask.
I, just, all the research I've seen from across the world that have sent their kids back unmasked have not shown that there have been, there aren't, as a rule, any outbreaks from the schools. There just, there just isn't.
I disagree. I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
I disagree. There have been multiple schools in the last week alone closed down in the South because of outbreaks inside the classroom.
What grade levels?
Little, like K through 5. So there's lots of them, we can look for them.
And what, and are these large populations? We're talking, you know, what kind of population are we talking? Are we talking a rural population? Are we talking in, you know, in the inner city or a big city? I mean, I don't think that we, it's like, the whole world was supposed to be treated like New York City, which was just in and of itself an anomaly. All right? We're scaring people, we're making this, there's so many things you can do that will help mitigate things, you know? Does the CDC talk about vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc? Obesity is one of the top things. Do they, as a regular, do you hear, when you turn on the news, does anybody hear anything other than vaccine, vaccine, vaccine? And there's so many other things that do help.
Please hold your comment till, or please hold till a public comment.
That do help, and I have seen repurposed drugs that they, that are being by people on the front lines that they are just ignoring. There's just too many things that are red flags to me, and this vaccine is not as safe as they're claiming it to be. And the gentleman who invented the mRNA, Dr. Malone, who himself is vaccinated, has a whole thing on as to why he thinks that we need to, whoa, stop, and let's take a look. They won't use repurposed drugs that they have 40 years of studies on, but they will use a brand-new vaccine that they don't know what the long-term costs are. And yet, here we're sitting there wanting these kids to get vaccinated without any regards to what the long-term cost of that may be, but we think that's a perfectly good idea, and mask them while we're at it, and then, you know, all will be right with the world.
I'd like to point out that we do not have a vaccine mandate. We are not pushing the vaccine.
Well.
We are not forcing anyone to get vaccinated.
But we're saying, the only reason we're doing this is because there is not a vaccine available for them.
And when the vaccine is available, parents will have that choice.
But honestly, this is a group of kids who...
Okay, you're moving the goalpost there, Sheila. What we're saying is that, what I'm saying is that we are not mandating vaccines. So you're making it sound to me as if we are somehow mandating vaccines.
Well, we push it with everything that they say. It's when you can get vaccinated, when you get vaccinated.
No, I mean, we just want parents to have that choice, as Dana pointed out.
And I have no problem with that.
The under 12 don't have that choice right now. And if we really do say that it's empower excellence and inclusivity, which is like, this is all what we've been saying for months and months, we want to be inclusive. The only way to be inclusive is to be as safe as we can. And I mean, I don't, I don't see any other way but masking to be as safe as we can be.
Okay, then can we keep them co-horted, masked in one room, unmasked in another?
Please hold your comments till a public comment.
I mean, that's just an option. Can we do that?
I'll ask you, do you think that that's a realistic option? Do you think that the people who have referred to, you know, use the word segregation to talk about how we might cohort or how we might separate kids, do you think that that is going to be an acceptable option to them?
I think if, if it was your choice of whether you had to send your child in with a mask and you truly didn't want to, it may be.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, do I want that choice? No, I would not be my first option. I think, I would like to see whoever wants to be masked, be masked, and whoever doesn't, not.
Sheila, I really like that you're thinking outside of the box. I think maybe that we could have done that earlier about different options. I think what comes to my mind from the start is the families that don't have equal access to that kind of information, to those resources. I think then it becomes, or could become, haves and have-nots, which is a completely different conundrum, something for us to think about. Going back to, I'm trying to go through my mind, all of the great things that you brought up. A couple of things that came to my mind is, number one, Dr. Fauci has been in office for how many presidents, starting with, I want to say Ronald Reagan, every president since. Someone along the line trusted him and continues to trust him. I think also, every living president has been vaccinated. That also gives some clout to that type of information and that, the recommendation for that.
I, there is definitely a place for vaccination. I have no problem with that. I'm not saying I'm anti-vax at all, but I'm saying that I think people need to be informed, and I am concerned with the younger kids. There's a lot of things we don't know for the risk-benefit factor is what comes into play here. And when we push something that we don't know what the true risk is compared to, you know, or the true benefit of it compared to the risk, we know what their risk is from COVID. I mean, that's pretty much out there right now, and it's pretty low for anybody under the age of 18. Not perfectly, but it's statistically, it's a lot lower than it is for over... Not perfectly, but it's statistically, it's a lot lower than it is for over. And we're making, or a lot of these kids who are getting, if you ask them, which I have been, you know, did you get vaccinated? Why'd you get vaccinated? Number, two top reasons I hear. One, I don't want to wear a mask anymore. That's number one reason. Second one is, I didn't want to kill my grandma. So we've either guilted them, or they just want the mask off. And neither of those is a good reason to get vaccinated. And neither of those is an informed decision. Now, there are people who are living with, people who are truly compromised and that decision was made in favor of who they're living with. Totally get that. But the two top reasons I have, and the number one is, I want my mask off. And number two was, I didn't want to kill my grandma.
That seems pretty significant, not wanting to kill your grandma.
I, but that's really what they were hearing. But I mean, that really is what they were hearing from the news, from everybody. You know, I don't want to kill somebody else. And that, you know, I think that's a pretty scary thing when we've got 18-year-olds thinking that I have to take this or somebody's going to die because of me.
Okay, all of that aside.
And that's, that's totally off the mask issue, which has nothing to do with what we're discussing here.
No, and I hear you. What, all of that aside, I think one of the, in my opinion, an argument that is valid, not that they're not all valid, but is parent choice. And it goes back to, if, if our parents don't have a choice at a certain level, then it's incumbent upon us to put in policy, and I know Tim talked about it, I think it was just last meeting, about us needing to really hash this out and let's have a consistent policy. When this happens, then we respond this way. We, we don't have that right now. The big void in my mind is parents of children 12 and under, they don't really have a choice. They really don't have a choice. And if some are masked, some are not masks, masked, then their choice is, do I risk the health of my child, my family, my community by sending them into school?
I feel that. The priority that I have in my mind is I would like students in the classrooms. And so I'm willing to do great lengths to have that happen. It is our obligation as a board to do that in a health way, healthy way, a safe way to the best of our ability. I hear what you're saying Sheila, especially with the CDC, right? They make a blanket statement for, I know, almost a billion people across the country. And it, and it, and I agree, it's, they need to be more specific. But it does go to the Michigan Department of Health, who doesn't necessarily do what the CDC says just because the CDC said it, and our local health department. They don't necessarily make decisions just because the Michigan Department of Health or the CDC. So I do have a lot of trust and they've been, our local health departments have been extremely informative. They've been giving us a lot of different kinds of information to help us see where they're making their decisions. So I see a direct connection in what they're saying and what their recommendations are and how we should move forward. I really believe in the layering method. And all of these different mechanisms in a classroom do have a positive effect. One individually has an effect, but as a aggregation, it does work. And I think that is one of the reasons why we were so successful. There's been a lot of things that I've seen in my past, the educators that I've been talking to, and my own scientific background, to see that lots of layers of protections do work better than one or two. So I think masking has a lot of value with the children at this age. It's not perfect for them and there are some consequences. With everything that we're doing, there are, there is a negative and a positive. You know, all of the, the spraying of the classrooms every night, right? I mean, there's a lot of things that can happen in a negative way. Every child is different. Some can be allergic to certain things. There's different triggers. So, but I think in general, for our community and where our community currently stands, I think the mask policy for under 12 right now for everyone is valid. I think there's a lot of evidence in our local community that it did work. I think there's a lot of evidence in our local community that it's effective. I also think it's a way to create a culture where students can learn and are more open to things like, don't touch your face, don't touch your neighbor, wash your hands. I've heard a lot of anecdotal where students are actively washing their hands without being asked now. Where in the past, when we had influenza outbreaks or any of the other things, that was never a thing that can happen. So I think there are side benefits disconnected from the actual, does the mask itself do everything that we needed to do? We know that it does not. We know that the layering and many things in the classroom does. Another thing I wanted to comment on was, I agree with putting a lot of this liability on the educators in the classroom. That enforcement is a big concern, especially when you have parents who are very aggressively against some of these belief systems. And the kids are really caught in the middle. Because this is kind of a battle between adults and the children know what's going on. And they're, they're frightened just because they see their, the people that they care the most about in a way battling it out. And that is a great concern. And kind of as I've been thinking and pondering this, we unfortunately, but are lucky that we are always putting our educators in this position. There's many policies that we have that they are kind of stuck and they're the ones who have to do the enforcing. A lot of behavior, clothing, the list is numerous of all the policies that we have in place. And really the ones that we have to enforce those policies are the educators in the room. And, and they're positive policies too, like standing for the pledge of allegiance, right? They are the ones who help enforce that. So there's lots of things that they're put in a position for enforcing. And so quite frankly, they're experts at working with the students in their classrooms and the age of each child and where that child's coming from and knowing the relationship. It's an unfortunate thing, but many of them do have great expertise in how to manage that. I have concerns about bullying, right? My mom and dad said, no, I don't have to and, and, right? And the bullying can go on from that point. But we do have a lot of awareness training that we've been doing with our students. We have our educators who've been going through a lot of things to help with that. So we have other things that we do in our district that we've been doing for many years that leverage tools that we've been trying to get our educators to help manage to that. Granted, this, this one issue, this masking issue is extremely emotional right now. And that does make it a concern of mine. Because not all parents have good mindfulness techniques to control their anger. And so parents and teachers, there's a, the chance of more of a direct conflict. It can be greater. But I think with some of the things that we're trying to do with the educators and help them prep them, or give them avenues, alternative avenues, that they don't feel that they're alone in some of the enforcing. Because the, really the bottom line again is, I would like the kids to stay in the classroom. I would love it if they would be in the classroom, looking at each other, hitting each other, pushing each other around, having a grand old time on the playground and not having these concerns over their head. But we just don't live in that world at the moment. It's just not where it is. And on more than likely, their, in their lifetime is going, they're going to have to experience something like this again. And so I think it's really important that we move forward in this manner of the multi-layered protections, try to support the educators with the tools that we've given them for other things that we've had to do up to this point, and support them the best that we can.
Okay, I have to ask, how long are we leaving the mask on them? Forever? Or just until the vaccine comes out? And as soon as the vaccine's approved, then the masks come off?
I feel that the, the masking is, as we've continued to talk about, is fluid. As fluid as the situation. I've been really resistant to say all or nothing with, with this whole conversation as we've had it for the last year and a half, just because I think when we back ourselves into a corner and we say, we're always going to do this, then we have to hold ourselves to that. Or if we say, we're never going to do this, then we have to hold ourselves to that. And in doing that, we don't know the future. We don't, we don't know what's going to happen, how much this might increase this year. I would love to say it was, you know, we're going to see 10 cases total and it's going to be nothing. We know that's probably not the case, but that would be ideal or perfect if it was. I think because we don't know, I would be very hesitant to, to give that timeline to say, you know, yep, okay, as soon as the vaccine comes out. Because if the vaccine comes out and we're in the middle of the worst part of the pandemic we've ever seen, I, I might be hesitant. No, I know, but I'm just saying, I might be hesitant to say that. But if, if it is something that we could potentially look at and say, okay, when, when the vaccine does become available, what do our numbers look like? I don't think anybody is opposed to backing off as long as, again, there are options out there available. And I, I also think within our town, we know that just like every other city in the United States and probably majority of the world, people are split and very passionate about this. This one thing right now, starting the school year, it does not feel perfect. It does not feel ideal, but it feels like a meeting in the middle of the group that are saying, no masks, never, I hate masks, and all masks always. And we hear both sides. We've received emails from both sides. We know that the community is split in that. And at any given time, it might be a little more to one side or the other. But it feels that this is kind of a way that we compare both sides and say, for right now, not, not always, not even for this whole year, but for right now, as we're starting the school year, knowing what we know today, this feels like a compromise to move forward. And then, as Jennifer has said numerous times, we are reevaluating always. So the hope is that we can go back to a normal school year with no masks.
Okay, so what kind of things are we going to use in order to, all right, let's say all the surrounding schools are not masking? Okay? So in 30, 30 days, we don't see any significant rise? We don't see anything? Can we at that point come back and say, looks like the no mask is working over here? Can we possibly? I mean, well, obviously if we have a big problem, then, then it's going to be okay. We have masks on. But, I mean, is that something that we'd be willing to look at?
Well, currently our policy is if you're vaccinated, at the 12 and up, that masks aren't required. It's voluntary.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking for the 12 and under.
Exactly. So we already have a policy where if you're vaccinated, and the reason why the 12 is there because they can be, right? That they, they don't have to be masked. So maybe that is the, the road, right? Is if, once a child becomes fully vaccinated, maybe that's the magic trigger point. Or like you said, or there's an analysis at that time.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. We need to give these
I agree.
Parents some kind of look at, okay, so let's say Claire, Beal City, Alma, in 30 days, they haven't had any kind of problem with COVID. Can we take that information and bring it here and say, hey, look, you know, these surrounding schools, K through five, we're not seeing an increase in COVID cases. We're not seeing COVID transmission. Would that be something that you guys would be willing to look at to possibly take the mask off our 12 and unders?
It's valid, right? It's real time, is what is going on, right? You know, and, and so as with many of these things, you have a peak and it comes down, right? And so, so there's all of these different factors. So I'm open to all of those pieces. And I think the health department can help us with that, too.
That's what I was going to say. I think a big piece in here is relying on our local health experts. And I, I really do think, you know, as Tim has said, I don't think they just listen to the CDC. And it's not just the CDC stating that. It's about every health organization. And so I think relying on our experts is critical because none of us are epidemiologists. And we, we have to look at an organization and something local. And if there's, you know, if they tell us no longer masks, then I'd be the first one to say, okay, let's consider it. Let's see where things are. And to me, it's one piece among others. Where are our numbers? What happened in our classrooms? What happened in the surrounding districts is one piece of evidence we can look at, absolutely. It's not the only one. And then, you know, as we've done all along, then, you know, bring us to a consensus of why do we think is safest at this point?
Because my one problem with your argument that masks work is how do you know it was the masking that prevented it? I mean, unless you have a cohort of unmasked and a cohort of masked, you don't know that the mask is what
You don't. That's why you have all these different layers.
Nor do we know that they don't work.
But what I'm saying is, we're saying masks work. We think masks work. We don't know that masks
Well, we think spraying the insecticides work. We think washing your hands work. We think, right? So there's a lot of things that we are putting, this is a unique situation. The SARS virus could be slightly different. It could be like Ebola and it would have to be transferred by blood, right? So we think these are, and these are techniques that do work on many infectious diseases, right? And I think we, we can refine it as we're moving forward. For example, some of the distancing, knowing that we can touch things and the odds of, of this transmission is much smaller, which at this time last year, you couldn't touch anything, right? Everyone was freaking about touching anything. And so we're learning and trying to adapt as we move forward in that process.
And I guess that's my point too, is we have come such a long way in what we do know in treatments, in therapeutics, in, you know, things to avoid. We know we can be outside now. The transmission outside is virtually zero. I mean, we've learned so much that there's, you know, and there is so much on both sides of the thing. You've given me, I've given you. I mean, we can all find studies that are going to show. My thing is, a lot of the studies I'm looking up, they have nothing to gain by, by arguing. As a matter of fact, they have a lot of things to lose, some of these virologists and people that I've been researching and looking up. And they all provide data and they all provide studies, which are a little over my head. And so, you know, I just, we need to question and we need to not just blindly go just because. I mean, I need to, you to tell me or prove to me that these kids, what we're going to take away from them from normal everyday living, we're affecting their psyches, we're affecting their development, we're develop, I mean, we're really taking a lot of things away, especially from the K to 2.
Better that than their lives.
Pardon me?
Better that than their lives.
But another way to put that would be
I mean statistically.
And, you know, and
I don't want to lose one. Sheila, I don't want to lose one.
Okay, but I'm here to tell you, you're telling people to take vaccines that also can cause problems.
But we're not, we're not asking them to vaccinate.
Well, okay, we are encouraging them. We're not telling them to, but we do encourage them.
It remains parent choice.
Correct, but we are encouraging it.
And you, you just said you want us to prove to you that we're making the right choice?
No.
Use the word prove.
Excuse me, I, I apologize for that. Thank you.
I think, I would like to really go back to what Tim said because I think it's, it's very, I think it's the way for us to move forward because we, we don't have all the answers. You know, me of all people, I think, if you know me, you know that I lead with my heart, right? And I lead on the air of caution with respect to kids. That will always be me. I think when Tim talks about having policy that we can follow, you talk about some, if the, the surrounding school districts are having success. My initial reaction was, I don't care what they do, right? But, but that's another piece of information that we should take. I mean, I think we all have our biases, right? And I think if we have as much as possible, a black and white, if this, then that, let's take into consideration all of the information that comes our way, then at least our, our, our community knows the stance we're going to take. It's not going to be wishy-washy. It's going to be, this is our stance. Let's move through those steps. I, I don't, I guess I feel as though we'll never come to a full agreement. I don't think it's going to happen in our community. I don't think it's going to happen in the nation with respect to how we should be dealing with things right now. We, we as an educational community or as a, a board that takes in information and then makes recommendations, I think we just have to come up with a policy that's going to make people feel comfortable or that we're comfortable with or that is, is somewhat static at first in nature. And it's going to evolve, of course it is, because we've never been in this situation before. We really haven't. So I, I think we can, we can debate this, we can argue this. But our next steps as a board have to be, how do we come up with a policy that we're all comfortable with?
So I think, thinking along those lines, I had asked Jennifer to, next month at our next board meeting, present back to the board some of the things that were finite, that were working last year, that we've repeatedly seen, that have helped us make those decisions, to use as a jumping off point. I don't think we're going to get to any, you know, agreement, except for we are where we are right now. We know there are people on both sides that would like more, and we could certainly debate this all night, and I don't think anybody wants to do that. So, thinking about the practical next steps, would the board be okay if we tabled this for right now, knowing that we've had the discussion that we've had, and that we listened to what has been working over the course of the last year, what steps, what type of things, what types of conversations we've received, considered considerable information from Dr. Morris, what information we're considering, and continue to receive, and also, that gives us a couple days into school, that looks how things are going. We do have the opportunity then to look at other districts, knowing that we won't have a finite answer in that time, but it gives us a jumping off point to have the discussion to build the policy. Would you guys be okay with doing that? And then that way, we can move on to public comment, or would we like to stay on this topic?
Absolutely. I think that's, I think that's a wonderful place for us to go from here.
I will say, the only thing I want to throw in is, these kids aren't being masked outside of school. So there's a, the quality of information that we're going to get is going to be limited, because if somebody comes into the school, you don't know if they got it from the school or outside of the school. So
I mean, we have all of last year's evidence.
Pardon me?
We have all of last year, to me, that's the best evidence we have of what worked and what didn't work in our district. And we know that every time, most of the time, we only had a couple cases where it might have been within the school, and even then, it was a limited number of cases. We know that the cases we had were coming from community inside our schools. And in a way, I thought that was a really positive message from us, that it wasn't the opposite, right? And so if we can keep it that way, I think that's an excellent thing. And I said that last time, I think to you, I think a month ago, you know, while what they do outside of school, you know, it's their choice, but the school is our responsibility. The rest outside, it no longer is, and so if they catch it outside, I don't feel like it's my responsibility. If they catch it within the school, as a school outbreak, then I would feel very differently.
Isn't there a definition of outbreak? I mean,
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, we have, that's a metric, that's a tool that we have.
I wonder, to finish that conversation, as we move forward to something like a policy or something that we all feel comfortable, if it would help us to bring Dr. Morris here. I don't know if that's something that will help you, Sheila. I know we talked about it last year, it never really happened, I'm sure she's really busy, so it might not be a possibility, but maybe that's something we can consider, having someone who actually does this with many districts, right? She's in charge of, what, 19 districts? Who probably, who has that expertise, who deals with this, and who has seen districts that are more like us. Although I do think, you know, and to go back to that last idea of looking at the districts around us, I think is a great data point, but they're very different than us as well. And I think it's something to remember. But I would love if she could come to have her point of view, and help us navigate, you know, have that expert voice to help us navigate this process as we move forward.
So are we at a point where we can move forward to public comment?
Yes.
All right. So we are going to move on now to public comment. I am going to ask that you hold any type of additional comments about the people that are speaking, in words, so no cheering, jeering, booing, clapping, all of that type of stuff. I will call your name, and then you can approach the podium. Mr. Oderkirk has his timer going, he will let you know at three minutes that your time is up. At that time, I ask that you please wrap up your comments, and we will move on to the next person. So that being said, we're going to start with Jennifer Shiza.
I'm a professor of biology and the parent of a high school senior. I really appreciate your recent decision as a board to require masks for the young children in our district who are not able to be vaccinated. And I'm here today, speaking, to ask you to extend this requirement for masks to all people in all buildings, schools in our district, including the middle and high schools. The Delta variant is a game changer. I'm a professor of biology, this is part of my job, is to study this and to understand this, and it's something we haven't experienced yet, despite our vast experiences and our difficult experiences this past year and a half. None of the prior data with the original version of the COVID will apply, not regarding transmission, not regarding effects in children. It is different, and it is more dangerous, unfortunately. The reason for my request is that we know only a small fraction of our students in the middle and high schools are vaccinated, so I don't understand why we would have a different policy for them. The data that are available publicly, 28% of 12 to 15-year-olds, 38% of 16 to 18-year-olds. I don't have a choice about that percentage, that's what it is. And so when we talk about choices, my choice is to send my son to school here, but he will be surrounded by a vast majority of unvaccinated people. And the policy therefore should be what our local experts are recommending, which is masking at this point in time, while our county is considered a high transmission situation at this time. The CDC guidelines are clear, the Michigan Health Department recommendation is clear, it's a strong recommendation for universal masking. Tonight, I heard our local health director also makes the same recommendation. It seems that that should be what we adopt. They are the experts. When it comes to health and safety issues, I ask you to continue to make decisions based on research that has been carefully considered by experts, with much more knowledge than any of us, and that this specialized knowledge should be the guiding factor. I encourage all of you to protect our children and our community by implementing science-based policies. Thank you for your consideration, to follow the recommendations of our local experts, and extend the mask requirement to all schools in our district, especially while our county is in a high-risk situation.
Thank you. Katie Reed.
I'm Katie Reed, I have five children and a master's degree in secondary education from CMU. I've experienced teaching public school, private school, and homeschool. We choose to send our oldest two to MPHS. Thank you for allowing public comments at these meetings and for taking what we share seriously. Your job is not easy, and we appreciate your service. I attended the school board meeting on July 19th, and as the meeting progressed, I wondered if I was watching a Jerry Springer episode. Kidding aside, something happened at the last meeting that did not sit well with me or many in this community. My comments are less about the decision itself, which I hope you'll keep that in mind, and more about the way the decision was made. I was pleased to receive the community survey about COVID guidelines. Sometimes it feels like parents are cut out from the equation with public education, which is unacceptable. But I felt respected and relieved to be able to voice my input through the survey. I want to commend the superintendent for working hard to put together her letter to parents about guidelines for the fall, and her desire to inform them in a timely manner. I was glad she met with leaders in the area to help inform that decision. When the survey results were shared and the superintendent's letter was presented, it was clear that the community and the superintendent were comfortable going forward with minimal guidelines. However, concern from a board member was expressed about students 11 and under not having access to the vaccine, and a recommendation came forth that they should be required to wear masks because of this. One of the board members made a reasonable request to gather more data from schools that hadn't worn masks last year in order to make a more informed decision before the vote. This request was not taken into account. After a fairly brief discussion among board members, the superintendent's recommendations and the majority of the community's recommendations per the survey were disregarded, and a decision was made to have students 11 and under wear masks. I will note, I was glad to hear more discussion this evening. It is concerning that five board members could overturn a decision that went against the majority without further research, disregarding what other area schools were doing. One of my biggest concerns was that students, teachers, and parents didn't seem to be considered in this equation at the July 19th meeting. Board members, I respectfully ask, did you think through what this would mean as far as unity goes in our district? Did you think about siblings who wouldn't have the same guidelines, causing probable tensions for them and their parents? Did you consider the hard-working teachers who would have to police this decision, having some students in their class required to wear masks, and others who would not have to? Did you think through how this decision might pit students against one another in an already challenging time in their development? Was mental health considered? I did not hear discussion about considering other perspectives, including varying scientific and medical perspectives as well. Why ask the community their opinion if it ultimately does not carry weight in the decision-making process after all? Why make a quick decision that may cause parents to pull their kids from the district, resulting in a loss of funding? At the July 19th meeting, I did witness some hopeful things, but the unjust way that decision was made, resulting in division, disrespect, and a seeming disregard for diverse perspectives, I have like two more sentences. It is reasonable to expect that parents, teachers, students, and school leadership will continue to have a voice that counts as we all work hard toward the common goal of helping our students learn and grow. Thank you for your consideration, and again, thank you for your service on the school board.
Thank you. Maureen N. A.K.
I am Maureen N. A.K., and I'm a resident of Mount Pleasant, a professor at Central Michigan University. I thank the school board once more for this opportunity to speak. I know it's a difficult time for you, but thank you again, and for your patience. Again, I want to register my support for board members Amy Bond, Willain Pangol, and Courtney Stegman. In the past few weeks, I have spoken about critical race theory, and I have asserted that it is not being taught in the Mount Pleasant public schools or in K through 12. I want to share this formal statement on critical race theory from the Michigan Department of Education. In a press release on August 10th, 2021, Dr. Michael Rice, the State Superintendent of Education, said, I'm quoting, "Critical race theory is not a curriculum, and it is not a pre-K-12 curriculum." Unquote. Rather, he adds, quote, "It is an academic lens, or set of lenses, developed primarily by those in higher education, to consider the elements and impacts of racism, and particularly institutional racism on our country and citizenry." Unquote. I, too, have been saying this for weeks, and people have said, no, no, no. Several weeks ago, the school board indicated that it would establish a special commission or committee to discuss inclusive curriculum. I'm curious about the status of that commission, who will be selected, when, and how. I hope that this important task of setting up the committee or commission will not be left to the Mount Pleasant Public School Superintendent alone. As an educator, a member of the Isabella County Human Rights Committee, a taxpaying member of this community, and someone with friends and colleagues whose children attend the public schools, I am committed to inclusive curriculum that is accurate and representative of American history and everyone's unique experience. I hope that the selection process for this inclusive curriculum committee is transparent and includes input from the community. We must create space to hear the voices and stories of everyone. Not doing so denies their history, robs them of their dignity, and denies them of their human and civil rights. I also want to remind those who love to quote the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King each time we're here, that human dignity, the civil and human rights of all people, are the things which King fought to preserve. Sadly, those are also the things that some of these people are trying to erase. I thank you again for listening to me. I support strong and inclusive curriculum, I support strong public schools, I support transparency. Thank you once more, and good evening.
Thank you. Next is Heather Beardsley.
My name is Heather Chalmery Beardsley. I live in Mount Pleasant, and I have three children in school. We have heard the word compromise several times tonight. It boggles my mind, to be honest, that experts advise universal masking? For the life of me, I do not understand why we're compromising. We need to be clear on some numbers. We live in a very small community. Our local hospital has eight ICU beds. Our local hospital does not have a pediatric ICU. Let me say that again. Our local hospital does not have a pediatric ICU. If children need ICU care, they are sent to hospitals in larger cities. But schools are about to open, and these pediatric units will start to fill up. We have already seen this happen in the South, where schools are already open. And yes, it's both metropolitan areas and rural communities. What happens when the pediatric ICU beds are full, and there's nowhere to send our Anyone have those answers? I mean, universal masking will lessen transmission of COVID and cut down on the number of pediatric ICU beds that will be needed. That's not a conspiracy theory, that is peer-reviewed research, not propaganda. Creating universal masking policies right now will lessen the burden of our local medical Two things in conclusion, I would like to state that I am in full support of the Mount Pleasant Public School Board, especially at this time, Amy Bond, Willain Pangol, and Courtney Stegman, who are currently the subjects of the recall petitions. Then one last thing, just because it keeps coming up, and I want to say that I am so thankful for Superintendent Verliger, I email her a lot, and she's really clear and precise in her communication, and I'm appreciative of that. But, not but, separate, the public data that was presented, and how has now, that survey that keeps coming up, it came up this evening, it is the subject of three recall petitions, has been proven through process to be fraudulent, and this fraudulent data is now polarizing our community. Many of us, Superintendent Verliger, we appreciate you, but we're wondering when you're going to make a public statement that highlights the unreliability of the data you presented in direct connection with your original back-to-school plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Craig Serbark.
I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the board and say thank you for your efforts to keep us all safe in our schools. The voters of this community spoke loud and clear when electing this board, and in the event that there is an actual recall election, I'm confident that those same voters will show up to support you all again. For the record, I hate wearing a mask. I drink a ton of coffee, and my breath is horrible, but I'm willing to deal with it. On a more classroom-specific note, I'd like the board and members of our community to consider this angle. There is no online option for our students this year. Our classes will have in upwards of as many as Our classes will have in upwards of as many as 35 to 40 kids. That's not every classroom, that's PE classrooms, that's a higher number. I teach a regular, I teach social studies, so my cap is 30. Still a lot of kids with no social distancing, right? I can't ask if my kids are vaccinated, and without board action, I can't ask them to wear a mask. So the anti-mask group says they can wear masks if they choose. But how can I keep them away from maskless, unvaccinated kids? How can I protect my students from kids that are not masked and not vaccinated? The only answer here is universal masking. Far as me, my grandmas are already all dead. But I don't want to be the reason, as an individual or as part of this school district, that a student has to be, has to live with the fact that they killed theirs. Masks worked last year, and if you need teachers to be the mask police, I'll be, I'm first in line, the line can form right behind me. I'll police it all day. I did it last year, I'll do it again. I'm gonna throw a little social studies history as my time winds down here. Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Justin Henry.
My name's Justin Henry. I'm a Mount Pleasant resident and voter of about 25 years, and I'm the spouse of one of your dedicated professional teachers, one that's absolutely passionate about implementing best practices. She has been smeared by the misinformed, but following the core values of her Marine Corps training, she is impervious to intimidation, and she is committed to do the right thing in the right way for the right reasons. Her passion, talent, and integrity and commitment are beyond question, but ultimately, she will respect her chain of command, and that is where your vision and leadership are so appreciated. I'm sure you didn't run for school board to be on the front lines of the culture wars, but you did choose your considerable education, experience, and leadership skills to support our public school students, and now you've been drafted to fight in those culture wars. I do respect the passion and conviction of our community, but I am angered by the political voices here and throughout our country that train our citizens with misinformation and flawed logic. They use our social and political groups to create nearly impenetrable bias to the point where the anchors of fact can't even be agreed upon. When you know better, you do better, but people are manipulating our knowledge and twisting our faiths to create division for our personal profit. It is your commitment to best practices and your skills of sorting credible expert consensus from alternative evidence shopping that is now protecting our kids and the future of our community. I don't envy your current job and wish I could alleviate some of the stress you must feel from the threats and intimidation, but I do applaud you for following best practices to protect our kids and standing on the right side of history and doing the labor to bend the arc of the moral universe toward justice.
Thank you. Next is Zanthakarp.
My name is Zanthakarp, and I have two kids in the Mount Pleasant school system. I want to thank the whole board and the superintendent for their service. I'm here today to ask the school board to follow public health policy put forth by the relevant agencies. Masks' optional policies in any of our schools go directly against what all of the public health agencies are telling us to do. As you know and as we've heard, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services just updated their recommendations for schools. To quote their statement, layered prevention measures, including universal masking, that's highlighted on their website, must be in place for consistent in-person learning to be maintained and to keep kids, staff, and families safe. And our local health leader has said the same thing as we've heard. The difference between strong recommendation and a mandate is political, but the message is clear. We don't need to guess what will happen if we move forward with lax policies. We can look at the districts that opened with these policies in the South and see how quickly their schools were shut down. A headline from Yahoo News states, "The new school year is already a disaster. Thousands of students are quarantining as COVID-19 cases skyrocket among kids." The pediatric wards and hospitals in these areas are full of COVID patients. Speaking of long-term consequences, many children who weren't hospitalized are still struggling months after COVID infections. For example, a star basketball player remains unable to even walk upstairs without losing his breath eight months after he was first diagnosed with COVID, as reported in the New York Times. NIH Director Francis Collins said that 11% to 15% of kids are getting long COVID even if they had no or mild COVID symptoms. With those numbers, if we have the types of outbreaks we're seeing in other districts, we are likely to have kids who develop long COVID. Please do not put our children in this position. A mask optional policy takes away the choice of parents to keep our kids safe. Standard masks are not great at protecting the one kid wearing the mask. The benefits of masks come when everyone present is wearing them. Saying our children can choose to wear masks is like making the choice to sit in the non-smoking section of a single room or setting up the non-peeing section of the swimming pool. I would like to conclude by expressing strong support for the entire board, and particularly these days, board members Stegman, Pangol, and Bond, who are being targeted for their votes to protect the health and safety of our children in Mount Pleasant school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eric Chirkover.
Hi, good evening. Eric Chirkover, I live in Mount Pleasant. In exactly a week, my children will be attending school in this building. They're vaccinated, and they're gonna wear masks. And I guess one of the questions I have is, how long will they be physically in the school before maybe things get shut down? Just as a reference point, I brought my son's State of Michigan Department of Community Health official immunization record, and it's pretty cool, the list of diseases he doesn't have, which include but are not limited to polio, measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, and a bunch of things I can't pronounce. This is actually five years old. I was trying to procure it for the marching band, who needed to prove that he was vaccinated in order to participate, and I think that's the case with some exceptions, to attend school. When I get an update of this one, this document, I really hope at one point it says COVID in there as well, and maybe even includes whatever boosters might be required. And I guess that's my way of saying that I would love to see a universal mandated vaccination program, but that's probably a tall order. But what I don't think is a tall order is a universal mandated masking program, especially for, as you've pointed out, the kids under 12 who don't have an option. My children want to keep their friends safe, and I'm with them on that, and that's pretty much all I have to say on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you is definitely something I wanted to say. In a communication that I wrote, I mentioned how thankless your task is, and I want to make sure that you know that I say, and probably for just about everyone, if you look at the shirts, without hesitation, thank you for the work you do.
Thank you. Next is Karina Turazi. Karina? I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Jessica Lapp.
Hello, I'm Jessica Lapp. I live in Union Township, and I have a son who will be a senior this year at the high school. I want to show my support of the school board, particularly board members Bond, Pangol, and Stegman, for their demonstrated concern for the health and safety of our children. I ask the board to please establish a universal mask mandate for the K through 12. Students, staff, faculty, and visitors, anybody in the school. State, federal, local health officials are all strongly recommending universal masking. This is now a pandemic of the unvaccinated. If we're not going to mandate vaccinations, then we must mandate masks as a basic level of protection for all of those in the K through 12 system. Masks are the second-best method of layered protection, and we must use them.
Thank you. Next is Michael Heitman.
Hi, my name is Michael. I'm a resident of Union Township, and I support the district's COVID response and hope that the board continues on the path thereon. The mask requirement is a compromise to the problem of how to have a school year in person this year. Students learn better in person, and the way to accomplish this is with the current decision the district is making. The mutations to COVID are making children more vulnerable to infection. Being proactive in this decision is good, and obviously open for adjustment as the year goes forward. And while information used by the board to make these decisions can be difficult to parse, it can also lead to taking a bad path. For example, at the previous board meeting, an individual came to speak during public comment, made available to everyone an article about how masks don't work. Looking further, that author of this article is actually a renowned conspiracy theorist that pushes the idea that the MMR vaccine causes autism, or that government purposely causes cancer through nanoparticles in chemtrails. Just asking the board to do what is right for the kids, kids of this district, do what is right for the teachers, and do what is right for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kirsten Weber.
My name is Kirsten Weber, and I live here in Mount Pleasant, and I have three kids that go to school here in Mount Pleasant. And I'm, many of the people who have already spoken tonight, their messages really resonate with me, so I don't have a lot more to say other than I want to be very clear that I very much support board members Bond, Pangol, and Stegman for their demonstration of, you know, advocating for our children and our children's health. And I also support universal masking of our kids, not just K through 12, but that that could be extended. And I also want to mention the petition that has been going around to rescind some of the positions on the board, and I want to say that I am very much against that, and so I just want to thank you all for your continued really good work and looking after our children. So, thanks.
Thank you. Next is John Zhang.
Thank you, board members. My name's John Zhang, I'm a resident of the city of Mount Pleasant. Students benefit from in-person learning, and masks make that happen. This pandemic has turned into a pandemic of the unvaccinated. It's not spread as thickly up here in Michigan as it has in the South, but we need to guard against that. Vaccination is the leading public health prevention for the COVID pandemic, and I would encourage you to continue to encourage staff, students, parents to get that vaccination. That's important. Schools are important in our community, they're important to the businesses, they're important to students' learning. We employ people at the schools, and they also enable parents and caregivers and guardians the opportunity to go to work. So our preventive measures are important. This board knows this, and they've considered science before when they, on the decisions they've made, and for that, I thank you. I especially thank those who, despite personal attacks, continue to look out for the school and the students in the school. The health of our students, the teachers, the staff, and the community must remain the primary objective, and I ask that you do not pass edicts that forbid you, forbid yourself from taking whatever action is necessary to keep students safe. At this time, the CD recommends universal indoor masking for all teachers, staff, students, and visitors to K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. I urge you to do that. I urge you to continue to listen to science, not to the QAnon positions of no vaccinations and no masks. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Dan Weber.
Hello, my name is Dan Weber, and I'm a staff member at Mount Pleasant Public Schools. I have three children under the age of 12 that attend the district, and we also reside in the district. First, I would like to state that I am in full support of masks for our students and staff to begin this school year. Since we are not cohorting, we are not offering an Euler online option, and we'll basically be back to operating at full capacity, it's really the one protection that we can offer to our families. Wearing a mask is the least that we can do until our community can reach the vaccination threshold to move forward. Finally, I want to publicly share my support for our school board, and more specifically, Ms. Stegman, Dr. Pangol, and President Bond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of public comment. Moving on, it is now time for Board of Education Discussion, an opportunity for any board member to discuss issues and concerns that they may have. Anybody have anything they'd like to say at this time?
Yes, I want to go on record in, for Ms. Stegman and the rest of the board, I feel like I can speak for all of us. Thank you so much for your support. It was very, it was wonderful to see the support today and to be able to walk through and have smiling faces as opposed to otherwise. And I know it took a lot, and we sure, I appreciate it. Courtney asked me to extend that to you as well. So, thank you, and a lot of extra effort for you, I understand, but it means, means the world.
Anything else anyone would like to add or say at this time?
Yeah, I mean, I would like to second what Dana said, but I also would like to thank everyone here tonight for maintaining decorum. This is a lovely change of pace, and I really appreciate it.
Anything else? Not seeing any, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.